...for April seventh, two thousand and twenty-four. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, my nation of your God, Tavion Smith, with everything I have in my heart. The residents are to sign in to speak during citizens' requests. Speakers are allowed in three minutes to present their initial comments. All meetings will be recorded auditorily and visually. Rule call, please, Mr. Burks.
Please, Buck.
Here.
Mrs. Dupuy.
Here.
Mrs. Iker.
Here.
Mr. Chetty.
Here.
Mrs. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Zabrowski.
Here.
Mr. B.
Present.
Mary Noak.
Here.
Mr. Fermus, for the German, or not be joining us this evening, in his place we have Mr. Paul Karenin, Dr. uh, Mr. Resmigal.
Here.
Thank you.
Now, time for our citizens' requests. And we have first, Mr. Halflusa, please stand and state your name and address now.
Name is Halflusa, I reside at four, six, four, seven Doverdale Drive. Uh, I'd like to invite everyone, uh, to join us, uh, that is the White Hall Historical Society, uh, next Thursday evening at seven P M. We will have a guest speaker, Dr. Todd DiCastino, who's, uh, a well-known author, as well as, uh, educator, and he's also the executive director of the Veteran Breakfast Club. The, uh, subject of his speech will be, uh, German operations during World War Two regarding sabotage and espionage against the United States. Uh, I'd also like to take this time to, uh, thank the members here that are members of the, uh, White Hall Historical Society, and those that aren't, uh, I'm asking to renew your membership, or to join us for that matter. It's only ten bucks a year, so, uh, I'm sure you can hold for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm looking forward to, uh, Dr. DiCastino.
Yeah.
He is awesome. But he's done for all the veterans, but in particular, World War Two veterans, but he's done letting those stories die.
That's exactly true.
Yes. Okay, next we have Mr. Tavion Smith, please stand and state your name and address.
Tavion Smith, seven, seven, forty-one Parkline Drive, uh, one, five, two, two, seven. I just want to thank Borough Council and, uh, White Hall Police for, uh, some of the current events happening in District Six, or whatnot, coming and serving and taking care of that, appreciate you. Uh, and also with the mailboxes and, uh, that issue, I want to thank you all as well for suggesting and getting that, getting that done, I appreciate it, I missed it last meeting. And another thing I want to invite you all, uh, I'm an advocate for Pittsburgh, for transit, anybody having kids, anything that, uh, depends on their transit to get to school and things like that, I've been a part of that, we're going up to Harrisburg, April thirtieth, uh, to fight for some of the funding and things like that. We have a couple companies, uh, that I worked for around the area, that they look for employees, but, uh, we got turnover and they can't get them because some folks depend on the bus and things like that, and we know it depends on ridership, but, uh, I'm a component of, you build it and they will come, you know what I mean? But, uh, so we got that going on, and I'm also, uh, four, one, two Justice Education Rights Network, I believe, Baldwin White Hall's a part of that funding that's coming down the pipe. We are going up to Harrisburg also on May eighth, so if you all want to join or have any kids, have a passion, or want to experience speaking to our legislators, May eighth, four, one, two Justice Education Right Network, April thirtieth, Pittsburgh for Transit, uh, we'll be going up to, uh, to speak to our legislators about some funding and bringing it back. I appreciate you.
Thank you, being, being so proactive, that's how you get things done, is what I'm doing.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. I, I do remember quite well, growing up here in White Hall, where the, the Baldwin Manor Bus used to go down Provost Road and go to, to Cassidy Village, and it's, it's a shell of a roof of what it once was, so, um, it, it's part of the conversation to, to keep our young people here in, in White Hall, because it was, um, a better thing to, to keep me at home, um, and going to the University of Pittsburgh, so, it's a really good thing to perhaps participate in, in that process for, for the betterment of our, the youth and, uh, working citizens, and, and of course, uh, the seniors of White Hall that you can get, um, county resources for, um, discounted or gratis now.
Appreciate you.
Okay. Next we have our bills and payable, Mr. Burks.
Administration of Services, Mrs. Dupuy.
In order.
Planning and planning, Mr. Chetty.
In order.
Public Safety, Mr. B.
In order.
Public Works, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Recreation, Mr. Zabrowski.
In order.
Library, Mrs. Thomas.
In order.
The Veterans' Work Fund, Mrs. Iker. It's in order, but I'm gonna mention something during the meeting, thank you. Sustainability Center Fund, Mrs. Iker.
In order.
Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, Mrs. Dupuy.
In order.
And Capital Projects Fund, Mrs. Dupuy.
In order.
Ask for a motion to recruit bills and billlets dated April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four, from the General Fund, totaling three hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred twenty-seven dollars and forty-three cents, from the Storm Sewer Fund, totaling five thousand, seven hundred ninety-one dollars and two cents, from the Sanitary Sewer Fund, totaling ninety thousand, six hundred eighty-seven dollars and forty-three cents, from the Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, totaling twenty-one thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars and no cents, and from the Capital Projects Fund, totaling eighteen thousand, two hundred forty-six dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second. Motion's been made second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Also ask for a motion to, uh, protect the transfers to be ratified, from the General Fund, in the amount of seven thousand, five hundred four dollars and nineteen cents, and from the Payable Fund, in the amount of thirty-eight thousand, sixty-one dollars and seventy cents, for grand total gratification, in the amount of fifty-five thousand, five hundred sixty-five dollars and eighty-nine cents.
Second. Motion's been made second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried unanimously.
This meeting is being recorded. I just also ask for a motion to pay toll to the date of April fifth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred fifty dollars and seventy cents.
Second. Motion's been made second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, and there is an overtime, that's a fact.
Good. Thank you, Ms. Burks. Any questions? Okay. And we have the approval of minutes for April third, twenty twenty-four.
Will the way of presidents from, uh, April third, twenty twenty-four, assess?
Second. Motion's been made second, on favor say aye.
Aye.
opposed, motion carried unanimously. So, we're already in the manner.
Okay. Uh, these, uh, those of you who are in attendance, sort of wondering why I have this laptop, this is actually pretty exciting, a resident of White Hall contacted me and said she, uh, on the board of the, uh, Western Pennsylvania Bleeding Disorders Foundation, so hemophilia, uh, if you're, you know, you probably know it by that term. She asked if I could do a proclamation, I said, why don't you come up? She said, we're gonna be in the Monterey Bay Restaurant, looking at the city, because the city is gonna be lit up in red tonight for world hemophilia that happens all over the world. So, uh, you know, she was, she wanted us to be able to link in, so I'm gonna read this proclamation to their group that is assembled, and then, um, I'm gonna turn the, uh, my laptop around and let them make some, uh, comments, so I, I think it's a great opportunity for our school public relation. So I'm going to get this, uh, start my video. I'm gonna ask, can you hear me? All right. Are we ready?
Can you hear me okay?
I can, can you hear me? Uh, my volume's down. Let me see. No, okay, uh, yeah, maybe I didn't hear you. All right. Uh, how about that? Can you hear me? Okay, good, good, good. Okay, uh, uh, Karen, uh, Kara? Uh, all right, so I have, uh, Kara Dornish, who, uh, is executive director of the, on the screen, and, uh, Mindy Perry is our, uh, White Hall resident. So, let me announce to everyone here, the first item of business is to proclaim World Hemophilia Day in White Hall Borough. We are participating in the observance with municipal entities all over the world, and I'm pleased to announce that the reading of this proclamation is being livestreamed through the Zoom platform to the Monterey Bay Restaurant, where the Western Pennsylvania Bleeding Disorders Foundation is convening to observe the buildings in the city of Pittsburgh being, uh, lit up in red to commemorate World Hemophilia Day. White Hall resident Mindy Perry is a member of the Board of the, uh, Western Pennsylvania Bleeding Disorders Foundation, as I said, Kara Dornish is the executive director, and after I read, uh, the proclamation, I believe either Kara and or Mindy will, uh, respond to the proclamation. So, a proclamation, World Hemophilia, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Where hemophilia is a rare genetic bleeding disorder in which one of the proteins that causes the blood to clot is either missing or insufficient, causing those afflicted with the disorder to bleed more profusely and longer, resulting in major bruises and bleeding from minor injuries, joint pain from bleeding into the joint spaces, anemia, and a shortened lifespan. And where hemophilia and other bleeding disorders are primarily treated with infusions of certain proteins involved in blood clotting, requiring, requiring frequent access to specialty medical care to avoid pain and permanent damage to the tissues and organs. And whereas hemophilia and other bleeding disorders require lifestyle modifications, including limiting activities that might cause injury, careful dietary supplement intake to optimize iron levels and clotting ability, and specialized medical care for ordinary injuries and surgeries. And where it is estimated that twenty thousand people in the United States and more than three thousand people in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania are living with hemophilia. And whereas every year on April seventeenth, World Hemophilia Day is observed globally to increase awareness of hemophilia, von Willebrand disease, and other inherited bleeding disorders. And whereas the theme of this year's observance is equitable access for all, recognizing all bleeding disorders, that is, to envision a world where everyone with hemophilia A or B, von Willebrand disease, or other bleeding disorder has access to diagnosis, treatment, and comprehensive care. Now therefore, the mayor, in concert with the council of Borough of White Hall, hereby proclaims Wednesday, April seventeenth, twenty twenty-four, as World Hemophilia Day in White Hall Borough, and calls upon all residents, businesses, and nonprofit organizations to join with the members of the Western Pennsylvania Bleeding Disorders Foundation in its campaign to educate the public in understanding the needs of individuals suffering from bleeding disorders, and to support its efforts to secure universal access, treatment, and comprehensive care for individuals afflicted with these disorders. And I've signed, uh, the proclamation on behalf of myself and my, uh, fellow elected officials. So, uh, at this time, I'd like to turn it around, and if, uh, Kara or Mindy would like to say something to the members of council and to the residents who are here, uh, we'd be pleased to hear your remarks.
It's with immense honor to sign this proclamation on World Hemophilia Day. Today is made out of to acknowledge and raise awareness about this often misunderstood condition, reenlarge on attorney and advocacy education toward those living with hemophilia. Hemophilia is a rare genetic disorder that appears to cause bleeding to block blood properly. Not just a medical condition, it's a daily battle against unforeseen leads, potential joint damage, and constant need for treatment and care. Yet amidst these challenges, the hemophilia community sustains resilience, strength, and unwavering courage. My son, he's six years old, and his name is Roderick R. Stur. He was diagnosed at seven weeks old on Christmas of two thousand and seventeen. He was throwing up blood and rushed to the hospital. Needless to say, it was a very scary day for our families. Since, they can't hear us?
Yes, we can.
We can't hear us.
We can hear you.
Oh, okay. Since this day, the foundation has been by my side, and will hand in hand with me for this journey, learning and navigating raising a child with hemophilia. My family and I are so grateful for that. I personally know that I would, I would be lost without them. So on this day, let us recognize the individuals, the families, the caregivers, the community leaders, and healthcare professionals, who tirelessly navigate the complexities of hemophilia. Their commitment to improving quality of life, advancing research, and promoting access to treatment is nothing short of inspiring, but our work does not end with recognition, it begins with action. As we stand united on World Hemophilia Day, let us renew our pledge to advocate for comprehensive healthcare policies that ensures access to life-saving treatments for everyone. Thank you for this proclamation, and let us continue to champion the cause of hemophilia awareness and advocacy, not just today, but for every day.
Thank you.
All right, uh, moving along.
This meeting is being recorded.
Uh, moving along with other, uh, items on my agenda. The, uh, I have the animal control report for March twenty twenty-four. Please receive twenty-six animal complaints, the amount of March, eleven complaints will refer to South Hills Animal Hospital, which represents a five point six one system usage rate, and deer removal, there were six deer removed, uh, in March, uh, for a total of nineteen deer. Moving along, uh, training activities, Officer Teddy completed a five-day basic SWAT operator course for Shakeout Cert. Chief Rigori, Dispatcher Maybon, and Dispatcher Morgan completed annual refresher training on the, uh, Pennsylvania Commonwealth Law Enforcement Assistance Network.
We refer to it as CLEED, and it's the database that we get criminal history information on, driver vehicle information, driver's license information on, it's a system that allows us to send about dealer map out messages, and interview persons and unwanted individuals.
Dispatcher Maybon completed the APCO Law Enforcement Communication Certification. On, uh, April twelfth, an officer was involved in a vehicle accident responding to a call for service in the twenty-eight hundred block of Somerville Boulevard. The officer sustained a minor shoulder injury and remains on due. Car twenty-six-two will be out of service for three weeks while repairs are completed. The safety exercise held at Baldwin High School last, uh, Friday was a success. Everyone that participated agreed it will enhance the school's emergency preparedness. Special thank you to White Hall resident Robert Gerlach and emergency management specialist who assisted with developing the exercise, uh, scenario. Uh, at this, I'm not gonna read the proclamation, but I issued a proclamation for Earth Day. It's the same proclamation that I issue, uh, every year, and, um, I, uh, would like to know, we're gonna have our activities on Saturday, so there's two opportunities to, uh, engage in, uh, Earth Day, Earth Day. One is to, uh, take the bus with, uh, the chief and I, at least, we have two, we have the members of the, uh, White Hall Committee for Environmental Action, will go to Prospect Park, and will meet, uh, Suzy Backshider's working on getting the kids who typically , uh, join us. Uh, we will pick up in Prospect Park, and then the chief and I are working to identify other areas, maybe Wayman, maybe the parks, uh, so if anybody has a particular place where they've seen litter and they want us to, uh, to go, uh, we will be happy to go there. I'd like to point out that the theme for this year's Earth Day, so there's actually a, an earthday.org, and I'd like to read this, because White Hall Borough is doing exactly this. Earthday.org is unwavering in our commitment to end plastics for the sake of human and planetary health, demanding a sixty, uh, percent reduction in all plastics by twenty forty. Our theme, Planet versus Plastics, calls to advocate for widespread awareness on the health risks of plastics, rapidly phase out all single-use plastics, urgently pushing for a strong UN Treaty on Plastic Pollution, and demanding an end to fast, uh, fashion. We, uh, join us as we build a plastic-free planet for generations to come, so all of you came to this building, though, we are collecting plastic and doing our part as White Hall Borough, uh, uh, we had our, uh, White Hall Environmental Committee, uh, actually, committee, environmental committee for environmental action, and, uh, whose subject was brought up, what about recycling the, uh, the Eclipse glasses? And we now have, uh, a box of, we can recycle Eclipse glasses. Currently, there's an organization that's gonna collect these Eclipse glasses and send them to South America where the next Eclipse is, uh, uh, supposed to occur. So this will take place for one month, one month?
Yeah.
Yeah, till the end of April, so you have till the end of April, uh, and think about, I don't know if it's too late, uh, uh, we talked to a personal care homes, and granted them the time to collect all the, uh, all the Eclipse glasses used by the residents, that's, you've got a, a pretty good sizable, uh, some people. Box is in the, in the library, so when you come in the lobby and turn to go to the library, it's right there on the right-hand side, uh, and to the right of that is the entrance into the community room.
I presume near the Lions Club, uh, box for spectacles?
Yes, yes, Paula actually cleaned it up, because we've been doing the, um, recycling of the markers, and, and so she now has three uniform boxes for markers, the Eclipse glasses, and the, and the Lions Club, uh, glasses. Uh, so, uh, moving along. Uh, where's Skip Brown? Skip Brown has a, uh, White Hall Fire Company report that I'd like to recognize him, Secretary of the White Hall Fire Company, and give up the opportunity to report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, sent to the report, our fire call, uh, total this year since December versus two-hundred fifty-five calls. Uh, last month, uh, since last report, we've had eighty-six calls, this has been our busiest month so far this year. Uh, our calls are significant, uh, during the daylight, uh, which our duty crew works, uh, they respond to false alarms, vehicle accidents, smoke investigations, and reported natural gas overs. We're happy our current membership is now thirty active firefighters. Um, our busy month, this month included two serious auto accidents that need our attention. Uh, significant damage was caused by a housing, caused at a housing unit at the fifteen-hundred block of Parkline Drive, due to vehicle loss control and went into it. Uh, we also had a serious collision on the intersection of Stilly and Route Fifty-One that caused several injuries. Uh, we're grateful for the police there to be helping us out, and we were, they kept us safe, so we appreciate that. Um, one thing to point out, gas leaks and others' natural gas, um, still be, still are our top cold types. In fact, I even called one in, uh, my wife was doing laundry and caught a clip for gas, and no matter how slight the odor is, we encourage our residents to call us to investigate, um, these gas leaks. Uh, we also attended a special training class on cancer prevention and awareness taught by retired, uh, Keespore firefighter named Jimmy Young. Uh, Jimmy is a cancer survivor, and he may as well, firefighters have an a- actual higher incidence of cancer more than the general population. Uh, this course is invaluable to raise awareness and preventive measures that can be taken. Uh, some of each preventive majors, uh, we've already started, we keep our gear clean. In the past, it was a status symbol for firefighters to have dirty gear or dirty helmet, um, now we realize this dirt has car sand engines in, so we try to keep our gear clean, uh, going forward. Um, we're also looking at ways to increase our fund drive returns and income as our costs, um, normal operations cost continues to skyrocket. Uh, so far this year, we spent twelve thousand dollars on truck inspections and normal repairs and maintenance, so basically, it's four trucks inspected and two truck tires replaced, cost us twelve thousand dollars. We're looking for ways to increase our income by using online tip boards that will require minimal effort. The Fire Company remained focused on training, providing quality fire protection services to White Hall Borough, but never intends to be a full fundraising operation. Um, again, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Vee, Mr. Chetty, for attending our meeting, uh, the, um, interaction between us is invaluable, I wanna keep that up. And then just for your information, I'm not gonna read it, but there's some stats, uh, from a NIOSC, uh, study, um, on firefighting cancer, on the incidence of it, um, one of them is skin cancer, um, but I didn't get it from firefighting, probably I got it from, uh, my time in North Carolina when I played basketball, of course, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Skip, for that report. Now, all of us, we've heard Skip talk about the fund drive, we've always talked about the fund drive every year, and how more residents need to be contributing to the fund drive. So we all have to make it our business to try to get more funds through the fund drive for the White Hall Fire Company. Now, we're gonna have two solicitations. One solicitation will go to residents, we're gonna ask every resident household to, to pay seventy-five bucks, it's a bargain, considering what we get from the White Hall Fire Company. For the businesses, they're, uh, asking a hundred and twenty-five dollars. So I volunteered to be the, uh, business captain in my building, and I want you to know, Skip, you can take it back to the White Hall Fire Company. That Steve Barone, representing, uh, Barone and Sons, Barone, uh, Murtha and Schaumburg, uh, and also Main Street Associates, is gonna contribute five hundred dollars to the Fire Company, and, and, and to try to set an example for other businesses within this borough to step up and support our White Hall Fire Company. So you can take it back, it's Steve, uh, you know, it's three businesses, but he's giving you a hundred and twenty-five dollars more, so, uh, we need to, to all do our part in this borough to get, let's, let's make this biggest, uh, fundraising drive for the White Hall Fire Company in this issue, all right?
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Let me, uh, bear with me on this, okay? So I know there's been a lot of discussion about hiring, and I, and I, um, I want to note for, this is, you know, my reporting, this will be my opportunity to talk. On the list, coming out, down with this, is, uh, public safety. Mr. B. is going to make a motion to hire a part-time dispatcher. And that might be confusing for some of you who've sat here and, you know, may have wondered why, uh, we're doing it this way as opposed to the way we hired a, a finance person. So I, I'd like to, uh, explain it to the public, the council already knows, and what you understand, is every organization wants to hire the best employees, all right? And to ensure that you hire the best employees, a business or government has to in- insulate itself, uh, insulate the hiring process from political considerations. So political considerations are relationships versus merit. Now, it's easier for business to do this than government, because government, uh, because of elections, you know, people run for office, and it's, it's very easy for someone to come up and say, hey, you know, I, I supported you in the election, I'm, I'm, you know, I'd like to be hired for this or that. So White Hall Borough has ensured that politics will not play a role by, um, authorizing the borough manager to hire non-police employees. So if you remember from your history classes and government classes, you probably heard about the city manager form of government. So it's a form of government, where government says, all right, we're gonna leave it to the professionals to hire. Now, the police department is different. They're, they have an executive, that's the difference between borough government and township government. Uh, borough government, the police department has an executive, that's, that's the mayor, who's responsible for running the police department through the police chief. The police chief is to the The police chief is to the police department what Borough Manager is to the non-police employees. So the chief, that's the, those who are, uh, being hired, who, and I'm going to talk about this because there is a process where council does get involved. But I'm going to explain why the political, uh, the protections are in place to ensure the best identity. So the, everyone has to appreciate that the police department is, is a different type of operator. It operates twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. It has very specialized training. The risks to liability are great. I mean, imagine if we don't hire, you know, if the chief doesn't pick the right dispatcher or right, you know, employee for the, for the job, they, you know, the risks of liability are, are great. So it's the police chief who recommends to council through the, uh, committee, uh, Public Safety Committee, who he wants to hire for, um, the, uh, non-uniform employees. So dispatchers are non, non-uniform, alright, okay. So for the non-uniform employees. Now, what's interesting is the council does interview and hire police officers, sergeants, deputy chief. But what insulates that hiring from political considerations is this Whitehall Civil Service Commission. So the Whitehall Civil Service Commission, they take all the applications. They test them. They give a list of ten people to the borough. Only the top three can be hired, you know, one of the top three can be hired by council. And if one of the top three is a veteran, they don't even have a, you know, they, they don't have a choice. I mean, that's a public policy that the veteran would be hired. So that's the reason why council gets involved in those because there are protections that are in place to ensure that we have the best employees working for Whitehall Borough Government. And I believe that we do have the best employees. And I, I believe that it's because of the systems that are set up to insulate a hiring process from political considerations. That's all I have, that's all I can say.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. Okay, before I go any further, I, uh, forgot to mention at the beginning of our meeting that we did have an executive session earlier this season before the start of this meeting regarding, uh, possible litigation, which is why I don't want to state that. Okay. So next we have our solicitor, Mr. Bob LeTunin.
Yes, I just wanted to report that the solicitor says his regrets. He's out of town for the funeral and asking to come to the meeting in his place. I just wanted to say that.
Alright.
That's all I have, hopefully. A couple of stills are in the room.
Thank you. And next we have our engineer, Mr. Rice Meisler.
Thank you, Madam President. We do have a few items that we reviewed in the evening. All listed in our April twelve report under item two. Uh, here at the bottom of the page, first page, um, the back, this road backwater valve. Just let council know that, uh, backwater valve was installed on the Route Thirteen and is functional. On page two, item four, overlook park. I used to tell you that the restroom facility is now under roof interior framing. It's ongoing, uh, as well as trades are in place. Curving around the play area, the playground area, the rubberized surface will be installed. It is, uh, ongoing. Um, Caliber Contracting submitted their fourth pay application and a change order number one. Change order number one is actually a new document, um, for, um, fence change, uh, the metal fence that would be above the wall. If you're familiar, coming up the hill in the parking area, that, that wall that will be replaced. It's for, uh, that decorative fence there. We reviewed the pay application and change order and recommend, uh, paying and approval of the change order. Work under, uh, pay application four includes the bulk excavation, storm sewer installation of a concrete supervision and general project requirements. Uh, the recommended motion is to approve pay application number four in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and eighty-one dollars and fifty-six cents for the overall park improvement contract. General construction to Caliber Contracting Services Incorporated.
Motion move. Second? Second. Motion being second, only favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion curating unanimously.
In regards to the deduct change order, the recommended motion is to approve change order number one in the deduct amount of one thousand six hundred and seven dollars and no cents for the overlook park improvement contracts. One, general construction to Caliber Contracting Services Incorporated.
Motion move. Second? Motion being second, only favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion curating unanimously.
I believe that the holders, First American East Street, has been performing work on site. They have submitted, uh, submitted their second pay application. Uh, the pay application is in order to be recommended payment. Work under, uh, pay application two includes demobilization bonds, sanitary sewer piping and excavation. The recommended motion is to approve pay application two in the amount of thirty-six thousand four hundred and five dollars and no cents for the overlook park improvements contract number three, home constructions to First American Industries Incorporated.
Second? Motion's been made in second, only favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion curating unanimously.
Okay, on page three, item twelve, under the twenty-twenty-four payment maintenance program, four bids for the twenty-twenty-four payment maintenance program we received on April tenth, twenty-twenty-four. I have attached the, uh, bid application to the report. Uh, the bids included the base bid and three all-in-one bids. Millian, Millian Sun Incorporated was the lowest pre-pollinated responsible bidder with the base bid in combination of all bids. Their base bid amount was, uh, five hundred and sixty-one thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents. So we were, uh, our original estimate from January, I think, was at four hundred and eight thousand dollars. So we're higher than, than what was originally estimated. However, what has been typical for the last three years or so, we normally come in approximately five, eight percent under the contract amounts. And that is based on a couple of elements. One of which is there's always an allowance in the contract for soft spots or unsuitable, um, subgrade material. We've been pretty fortunate the last several years that we haven't had to implement that item with a contract. And then the other is, uh, the concrete curving.
Well, um, I, I had that actually, um, reviewed our, our past performance on what we do for our payment maintenance program. And I, I found that we ultimately, um, a little over, uh, a half a million here or so. I, I'm not that disappointed of being, about being over sixteen K, especially since, I appreciate that. It, it has something to do with, um, uh, the overall asphalt industry and, and those material costs. So, uh, I don't see any reason why not to proceed. But I, I would like to have some insight as to what the scheduling was on that because we, we had some ideas as to how to, um, utilize, uh, any, um, asphalt a- a- after the fact in a storm sewage project. And then I, I thought about it and then I, I, I'm wondering whether or not we can technically do that because there are, even though it's, uh, otherwise output of waste. We're, we're discussing, um, uh, moving money, uh, between, um, one fund to, to the other, um, to, to potentially, um, do that. So, um, uh, I, I'm sorry that I'm throwing out a lot of questions here. Um, so I'll break it down, um, specifically. Specifically, what would be, uh, the timeframe of, um, the, the first road pavement, uh, work? Should we go ahead and approve this tonight?
Well, the contractor will, will provide that when they're notified of the contract agreement. Because right now they're not contracted for this with the borough. So, um, it's mandated that all of the things be completed by, I mean, it's October fifteenth. So as long as it's sooner the better. But I can't give you a exact, or even approximate time.
Well, I, I'm sensitive to the fact that, uh, other people are having this, uh, idea because they say that there's two seasons in, in Pittsburgh. So you got winter and you've got road work. So, uh, uh, absolutely, um.
We are fortunate to, um, complete four months of work in town, seven, eight months, if you can.
Well, well, that, that's good news that there, there is a contractual deadline that they, they were, um, willing to uphold for this. That, that's great news. The secondary question that I have is that, um, we were discussing taking some of, um, the, the waste product from the, these payments to assist a resident on a, um, uh, a difficult yet unique, um, yet easy to, to fix, um, storm sewage situation on West Club Drive down to, um, Curry Road. Um, so I, I had received a, a call from her today and I believe that she might have reached out to, to some of, of you other folks to, to ask, um, are, are these things still tied together? Because may, maybe they shouldn't be budgetarily tied together anyhow.
Budgetar, I mean, they're just, it's just the leftover, we already talked about it all the time. So it's leftover waste, so maybe we should use it if we can to assist. So I don't think there's anything tied into anything else except for what it is, you know? It's leftover, nobody can assist.
Well, well, she's definitely very grateful for the borough's assistance in this matter. Um, there, there are two things that I, I took away from that conversation. One is that, um, she's not necessarily willing to, to wait if it's sometime in October, especially since there's going to be a lot of rain that happens through May, through June. And still not having a date is really, quite honestly, a health-related stressful to, to her. And, um, uh, Mr. Mayor, did, did you talk to this resident?
I did talk to the resident, yes. Uh, you know, I, I indicated that, um, council would be taking action to, to take, to work on the culvert. And, uh, I said, don't take it from me, take it from, uh, someone from the borough. And Scott, our rest office, contacted me.
Okay.
I returned her call, Mr. Mayor. She called me.
But did she?
Yes, I did speak to her.
Yes, yes. So, so the takeaway is that she's very grateful for, for the assistance, but she would, um, very, um, much like to know exactly.
I'm very concerned about this conversation. We cannot use public funds for private property. Every one of you can come and approach us and say, "Oh, this bit of grass in my yard needs fixed." You need to fix it. This shouldn't be happening in the borough because every one of you, every one of us can come and make a claim now to the borough because we've done it for one person. It just really is not a conversation that I ever thought I would hear. It's, I think we're just opening a whole bag of worms because I'm, I know people now who are going to come up here and say, "You did it for someone else on their property." And I know there's a tension on my property if someone ran over and I on the borough.
But that is, you're right, Kathy.
We're, we're starting a resident that's a, a downhill road, sorry.
I think here's the difference. The difference is Borough Whitehall is responsible for getting rid of the storm so it won't. That's our, that's our job. To find a way to get rid of the storm so it won't, so it doesn't flood our residents. And, uh, you know, in this case...
That means every resident that has a sun pump needs to come up here and say, "I need it replaced by the borough." I need the borough to do it.
It's coming from the streets, it's coming from the street. Water's coming down that.
That's why they're having, that's why they have sun pumps.
Okay, well...
Pump the water out of their street directly to your yard. And they're going to expect us to do it from now on because we're not a federal people.
No, I, I don't think so. This is the right thing to do if we could justify...
I disagree with you, but I think differently.
Alright, well, I heard you. Now, I want you to hear me for a little bit, here it is. No, I, you know, we're going to use, uh, uh, it's, we're going to use asphalt that is over, you know, that, that we would put in the, in the, uh, prospect part, you know, somewhere, uh, we would get rid of it some way. Why not help a resident? Uh, you know, uh, so I, I think this is the right thing to do. And we need to find ways to try to help people out of their problems. Uh, we, you know, in some ways, we helped to create this by not, uh, you know, not attending to the West Club, you know, that whole district. We do, there's no infrastructure up there. You know, we've taken that into consideration. There's no infrastructure to take that water, you know, and now it's going down on her property. And so we have an obligation, we need to figure it out.
Well, my candidate said, I agree, sort of opening up a can of worms to the extent that people can access for something that they shouldn't have because the borough doesn't owe it to them in that regard and taxpayer money owed to them. In this case, this lady came up and I myself, along with some council members, said, "Yes, we'd like to help you." So we can do it. The answer was the, the caption, "If the, if the road program time." And right now, that's where it has to stand. I mean, we don't have any answer to go any further. So I think that conversation is where we're going to leave it right now. Scott, is there anything additional that you told, uh?
I don't know.
Okay, so that's where it stands. Okay, it's an unfortunate situation, but we're doing the best we can. But, so that's what we want.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so now we, uh, are we in a discussion on this aspect of, uh?
So we have just, um, just, uh, like council does, so the two low bidders are within approximately four thousand dollars for each one. So it's what the market is. So if council, you know, take a warning that did, we recommend a motion to be to the base bid for the twenty-twenty-four payment maintenance program in the amount of five hundred and sixteen thousand six hundred and ninety-two dollars and fifty cents to Millian, Millian Sun Incorporated.
Second?
Second.
Motion being second, only favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion curating unanimously.
Okay, on Felix Drive, on, I am fifteen page four. I just made counsel where, uh, we were in contact with, um, soleite construction. They are approximately ten days to two weeks out to start. Uh, they've been very lucky to start with, uh, the wet conditions, however, we did, uh, stress for that, we need to get started and complete it. So I look for them prior to the next council meeting. And then I am sixteen, enjoying the run, just that I counsel there. Uh, all of the planned repairs have been completed that I've mentioned, uh, with the damage as a result of the pipeline construction. Other segments of that line that were identified from video tape diagnosing the system as well as, um, food instructions, uh, working out in every place. So I don't want to ask any further. Any questions?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make a comment. Uh, we made it's last meeting, but I think we need to reiterate this. We do not have one citizen here complaining about a water problem. We're flooding their basements with it. We've got four inches of rain and it's record steady. I don't know if it's...
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half, okay, but I'm small. Seven and a half is a... Don't leave it. It, it's just, uh, credit what was done and how this problem solved. I just want to make sure people see that and realize when your tax money's going, it's worth.
Mr. Bee, just to, uh, let you know, we are already in contact with two residents regarding the potential possibility of installing backwater valves. However, uh, both, uh, both situations seem to defy, uh, right, compared to what we've experienced in the past.
We've got hundreds of people, that's our delegation, right, definitely, in our page. And, uh, nobody's here, but this, this is...
Um, just one quick question, uh, regarding, uh, soleite construction. Has the borough had any, um, past performance record with them? And likewise, has, um, Gately Engineering had any, um, likewise performance, um, relationships with them? Simply because I, um, I'm a little concerned that I am not really finding a- anything out about them as I, I try to, to do my own research.
Um, I have, um, soleite construction, I'm on the second generation of Tropino. I've worked with, or around soleite construction since nineteen ninety-six. Um, the, the construction company has gone to a transition succession plan, um, so... Um, uh, the construction company has gone to a transition succession plan, um, so I'm dealing with the, uh, the Sun Hall. So, yes, I have had experience there. They have successful for plenty of projects in the borough. Um, but I'm aware of six, uh, two thousand.
Wonderful, thank you.
I'm sure they'll do it well.
Wonderful, thank you.
Any other questions for Scott? I'm trying to move on to the manager's report, Mr. Wirth.
Thank you, Ms. Wirth. Uh, the first item of my report is regarding regards to the Sheikah's salt contract. Uh, Sheikah has begun the process of checking whether Carco will extend the salt contract to the second option here. So that process starts with each individual municipality sending a letter directly to Carco asking for the extension. You have a copy of that full letter in your packet, and I ask that council authorize me to mail the letter tomorrow.
Second. Go to the page second, on the page say aye. Aye, 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 pose. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you. Uh, and next up, I have amendments to be made, salary ordinance prepared, um, in anticipation to staff members joining our team. So I ask first that council move to repay hatch ordinance and its entirety for adoption.
Motion, uh, second. Motion, uh, second. Motion made second, on the page say aye.
Aye.
Those, please read.
Uh, ordinance about Whitehall, out in the county, from the west of Pennsylvania, amendment eleven sixty-nine, fixing salaries and wages to be paid by its director and aqua zumba instructor. Whereas on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the council of Borough Whitehall adopted ordinance number eleven sixty-nine, with some salaries and wages for various personnel within the borough, and on end of calendar year twenty twenty-four. Whereas council has determined that it is necessary to organize salary wages for the position of finance director and aqua zumba instructor. Now therefore, the council of Borough Whitehall hereby ordains as follows. Section one, the position of finance director shall be amended and the salary for that position shall not be in excess of the amount set forth below. On section C, administrative personnel, finance director, eighty-five thousand dollars a year. Section two, as section one D of the ordinance shall be amended by adding the position of aqua zumba instructor to the swimming pool personnel at a pay rate of twenty-five dollars per hour. Section three, this ordinance shall take effect immediately upon enactment by council. Section four, all prior ordinances for personal ordinances in conflict here with shall, here here with shall be and the same are hereby appealed to be accepted by such common. All other prior ordinances number eleven sixty-nine shall remain as available to effect. I ask for a motion to adopt ordinance number eleven seventy-one.
Second. Second. Motion being second. Your call, please, Mrs. Wirth. Ms. Wirth, yes. Mrs. DeGee?
Yes.
Mrs. Iker?
Yes.
Mr. Richetti?
Yes.
Mrs. Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Shubrowski?
Uh, no, because we listed a job for something at your office.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Last in my report, um, in, uh, I guess in following up that, Jacqueline Robinson and Valerie Jones will be joining our staff as our new finance director and aqua zumba instructor respectively. We look forward to having them join the team. Miss Robinson will start on Monday, April twenty-second, and Miss Jones will join us once the pool opens. Uh, in speaking for some information on the aqua zumba instruction. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Wirth. Any questions for reporting?
Um, the, yes, I was gonna make this part of my public works report, but I I just wanted to thank you for your assistance in turning on the the water, um, for at least, um, Union and I believe Snider, when it was done today, because I drove by and and saw that. Well, what this is, is the, um, the restrooms in our, um, parks need to to be unwinterized, if you wanna call it, so that, um, Pennsylvania American Water can go ahead and and turn on the water for, uh, facilities. I just wanted to, um, to note that, um, baseball season did start on on the first of April, and we did need have games being played at at least, um, Union Field. Uh, so, um, ma- making sure that we turn this around is very important. So can you please give us a status report on, um, really all the rest of the parks, please? I'm gonna take your time as a check. Uh, okay, um, would that be inclusive of perhaps, um, the the bathhouse here and Grand Plaza slash the pool hall?
Uh, I'm not certain about the pools, we're not up there yet, we're not that, but I think, uh, Mr. Harris' staff helped him get American Water for the check.
Yes, yes, please do, because, um, I I definitely don't want it to eat on any, um, fun with a- any of the great works that, uh, Recreation Department does, especially like the, um, the concerts of the park and Memorial Day festivities, that the these things need need to be interacted with. Okay.
Yeah, didn't we have an issue last year of, for the same exact thing?
Uh, in in fact-
Because it was in the meeting that it was?
Yes, in fact, we did. I I had a resident reach out to me and and call out that al- almost, uh, exactly year-to-date, it was, um, the meeting minutes of four nineteen that we had decided to give the authority to the superintendent of Public Works to go ahead and decide when would be the appropriate time to do it. I I'm gonna call this somewhat of a perfect storm, where, um, uh, I I would hope that, um, uh, Mr. Harris would, um, have checked in with, um, the recreation director, vice versa, um, uh, prior to to the season starting, to see if it was going to be at all possible for for water to be turned on for, um, the first, because it is, there there was no real weather reason as to why. If it wouldn't have happened, it might have been just due to the fact that we had to to deal with a lot of rainwater, or maybe it was due to the fact that we were busy on on boarding staff.
There's also stones, uh, the first week of April.
Well, we we had hail, did have hail, but that that is not sufficient to actually freeze over pipes, which might be the the actual concern about why not, um, open and enable.
Well, we did give the purview, as you stated, you know, to the public works director, because it's contingent on whether or not. You know, if you see what happened, it was eighty degrees and it was forty in rain, but now they're all on, so we're moving forward.
Frank, I spoke with the president of the PWA this morning, um, like, I think, well, they're, you know, the, somehow, um, with the schedule, the first day of the day was low tense, the first week of April, uh, pretty soon come off the truck until last week. We had steps to start prepping the parks for spring, I guess, need some time installing, three installing fixtures, I should say. Um, you know, our landowners are not that deep in these parks, um, the buildings are not getting slaved, so we need to bear in mind caution. Um, that being said, there also was additional storms last week, and the water were at their mercy a bit. Uh, we had them scheduled for Monday, unfortunately, they didn't get out there until today. Um, that's that actually was a bit of a sugar, all as well.
But, uh, like I said, I I am gonna call it, uh, to to perfect storm, uh, on on all of those fronts. Can you please also confirm that that Frank was taken care of, because, um, it might not have been part of the the conversation when, um, it it was, um, uh, brought up by, um, the baseball association, because there is no baseball field now. But i- it's it's important to to go ahead and do that.
Okay. Yes, that's true. Assistant manager report.
Do have a report. Uh, first up is in regard to the borough's pension audit. The borough's uniform and nonuniform pensions were audited by the Pennsylvania Auditor General last week. The audit was for years two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-three. The auditor reported one finding at the exit interview on Friday, and that was regarding the U V certification form three eighty-five. The form submitted in twenty twenty-three mistakenly did not include a police officer who was on active military leave. Um, as he was left off before, the borough received an underpayment of state aid. So the borough actually received a reimbursement payment of eleven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars.
And I think of a lot of credit to Alyssa for doing this for the first time, and on her own, as we were all at, um, conference in Seven Springs. The auditor, uh, herself actually said that Alyssa was fantastic and nothing but great things, and she was so organized with it. Um, and unfortunately, she's retiring next month, but she is going to pass on to her colleagues that Whitehall Borough is certainly a very good and easy client to have for audit.
Mr. John, Mr. Wilson.
And President State.
State for audit.
Thank you, Alyssa.
I have one more thing. Um, I had non-resident summer camp registration last night, um, and that was for Golden Borough and Golden Township residents. That was very successful. We only have a couple spots left for Frank Park and you. That was only nice.
Well, thank you. Any questions? Okay, we'll move on to, um, planning and zoning, Mr. Ken.
Sorry, it's a little bit. Um, so first, uh, the zoning hearing board met yesterday, April sixteenth, to arrange a decision on the appeal by Michael Dinger, of Dinger Investments Three on denial of permit application by the borough zoning officer to install three limited amusement arcades in a self-service laundry operation. The zoning hearing board determined that the zoning officer, uh, properly denied the zoning permit. Um, the planning and zoning committee met on April eleventh to discuss recommendations made by the planning commission. Among items for discussion were definitions for various uses as related to the limited amusement arcades. Council's been provided with those recommend recommended definitions in their packet, uh, but to stay for everybody to hear, they are clearly defining what's a grocery store, a convenience store, a laundry service, and private clubs. Um, of note, the consensus of the committee is that a food and liquor requirement be added to the definition of a private club. Uh, this inclusion was a recommendation by the chief of police, and a copy of that letter is also in the packet. Committee also had a consensus to require staff to be physically on-site to monitor devices and uses related to the limited amusement arcades. The planning commission made a recommendation that electronic surveillance also be an option, but the committee disagrees with that recommendation. Again, the physical presence is a requirement, and also rec- the physical presence requirement is also a recommendation of the chief of police. The final point, and one that the committee wants to have a discussion for council if so needed, is the inclusion of new uses for the limited amusement arcades. Currently, the ordinance allows for bowling alleys, convenience stores, grocery stores, high-turnover restaurants, and low-turnover restaurants. The planning commission recommends adding laundromats and private clubs, as defined in proposed definitions, uh, to be included. The committee is in favor of private clubs being added, but wants to take the question to council whether or not laundry services are in corporate use, uh, to the ordinance. So with all of that, sort of the questions about what I said, and if you feel the discussion is necessary to also add laundry services to the limited amusement arcades.
Any discussion? Are there any time constraints on any of these businesses? Can they? I'm thinking, can it's a twenty-four-hour business, can they have arcades home twenty-four hours? Or do they have to be limited to certain hours?
It was believed, uh, uh-
Establishment's open and it's all over?
Yes, yes, it's open twenty-four hours. Like, I heard, you know, when you go down onto the, uh, vacuum machine, you have a first common offer, we're confident, I mean, it's open. And, you know, the, I think it was the District Attorney's, uh, Association, right? Uh, had some reservations, uh, I thought that's my last, uh, about, uh, you know, these, uh, these devices. I think that we we have to be judicious where we allow them, uh, to be. To say, hey, we have security cameras in there, doesn't mean anything, because we're gonna be the, you know, the police are gonna be both that that are gonna have the police back. And, uh, so it's, I think we're inviting problems, if we expect it to, uh, wandern out, and, uh, both that, like, council positions.
Well, I agree with the mayor on the laundromat. I mean, that that doesn't seem like it's, um, would be really safe, hey, like, people doing just, excuse me, twenty-four hours and they were just, they were in there on these machines, I don't know, it's, uh-
I don't know why, uh, you know, I don't go to the laundromat very often, but you have the laundry room, do your laundry. Which is, I mean, it's, why why create a problem when you, uh-
Yeah, that's what we're-
And, uh, you know, with the chief's recommendation, you know, we spent a lot of time talking about this, and, uh, it it's a safety issue also, you know? And we we need to be, God, instead of the establishments or dining guests in person, should they don't want hangouts. Not, you know, that that's not serious, for cameras and stuff, so that's why we, that's our recommendation.
I I have a question for you, for you, Chief, because I I know that you you inspect these units. So, um, I I understand in which to to get a payoff from the games of skill, you you have to provide a P A driver's license to do so. So, um, is that part of your regular, um, uh, inspection? Because my, uh, personal ethical concerns about these types of devices is, is, especially in a, a, um, u- unsupervised, uh, setting, is what what is to stop a child from from going ahead and utilizing these devices when when they can clearly say, no, no one, um, uh, who isn't of age should be using this? I- is that part of the the regular inspection process?
Inspection that the officer completes, um, annual basis is all, involves making sure that, number one, that zoning equipment be used as a, like, maybe-
Accessory use?
And then it also has to meet the square footage requirement, it has to have the, um, proper number of machines that are rented by zoning. They have to make sure that the machine is what it says, that it's a compliance of the place document. Then we do do regular inspections on all of the personal properties, make sure that they didn't bring another device with us, knowing that, I don't believe that there is a games requirement in our ordinance per se. I mean, that's something that could possibly be looked at down the road, and these, these P A's, they call for P A games of skill. They're in flux right now, because they continue to go through a court system to see if they have to be regulated or make mistakes unregulated. So it's 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 a constant change in-
Thank you.
Yeah, um, Mr. Wirth, do you have anything to add? Yes, so, um, I would like the consideration for the following motion to authorize the borough solicitor to draft an amendment to section one eighty dot eighty-one and dot four dot one, amusement devices limited, chapter one hundred eighty of the Borough Code of Ordinances, to allow limited amusement arcades as an accessory use for certain primary uses.
And this is, you mean, laundry services as baseball players, or should it just so staff has direction?
I'm sorry, which one?
I wanna clarify, jump in, but the the motion before you is for certain primary uses, which it doesn't appear that private clubs are a consensus in the room, um, but not laundry services.
But not laundry services, as we, uh-
But to clarify that, that's the private club use and not the staff's, to take that direction.
All right, so we have a motion, and a second?
I'll say it.
Motion made a second, and all cases say aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, pose. Motion carries unanimous.
And now we go on Harris, who goes?
Thank you, Mr. Wirth. Next we have, uh, library, Mr. Thomas.
Yes, I have representative from the library board, Carolyn.
Thank you. Um, I would, I wanna piggyback a little bit on what the mayor told us about the eclipse glasses, and said that we won't find a hundred of them free, because library staff was able to access direct money to get them. And indeed, we are recycling them, but- The library, I mean, our our staff goes to Great Lunds often to write grants, to obtain a lot of these things for the community, so I just wanted to add that. The only other thing I'd say is the Lions, we also collect crayons in addition. And you would be surprised how many crayons we do receive, so I thought I'd mention those in in addition to the markers and the eyeglasses. And I had a conversation with someone from the Lions Club, and they asked me if we ever have a chance to tell people, please don't be throwing broken bits and pieces of glasses in, that it's possible for making nice glasses with full frames. So I thought I'd put that plug in for them, if it's going in with the public needs. Um, one of the things the library has done, and it does every year, is it helps, uh, combines partners with ARC to do tax returns. And I heard from Paula that we did five hundred and nineteen tax returns this year, and most of those serve primarily low-income seniors from the community. Um, and Brandon Taper is our staff member who organizes it and and goes to Great Lunds to make everything look smooth. Let's not make a little plug for Brandon. Um, the library is hosting a Women in the Work course luncheon on the twenty-sixth of this month, and it is for Baldwin High School female students, and it's actually going to be a career day. And, uh, there's a number of people, I think, that that Ms. Wirth's is gonna be there, along with some of the library members and some others from the community. And the young women will have a chance to, uh, engage with, uh, we have a speaker coming from Turner Construction. And the young women will have a chance to, uh, engage with, uh, we have a speaker coming from Turner Construction. And in addition to that, all the other folks that are there that are women in the community that have been successful in business and will be able to share information. That is in partnership with Q B D again, so again, we're helping, you know, the, the cost is there, going to be helped by the Q B D contributions. Uh, right now, twenty-five women, professional women, have signed up to help, so this should be a really great event.
It is a really lovely event.
Yeah, we heard that, yeah, about that last year.
Paula was gracious to invite me last year, and it was just amazing. There's some really, um, fantastic women there coming out of Baldwin, like, all high school.
They are amazing, and they have lots of questions. They were tough ones, right? We have a new part-time reference librarian who started this month. Her name is Marianna Almeida. And the good news is she is a Whitehall resident, and she also has kids in the district, so, uh, she's gonna really be a, a, you know, she knows a lot. She'll be a great addition to the staff there. Uh, we are in recruitment mode for two new board members. I think many of you are aware that we have term limits on our board membership. So two of us, myself and Mary Rose Chasler, will be cycling off. Um, we'd love to stay, but we can't. And so we are hoping that if any of you or anyone in the public has an idea for folks who might be a good candidate or some of them, and, and also interested, to please share that name with Paula Kelly, and then most of us on the nominating committee will follow up with them. But, uh, two spots is, uh, is gonna be a big, we have a big fill for next year, so we're hoping to be able to square that away well before December, when Mary Rose and I have to cycle off. We, just a couple of other announcements. Um, we're collecting gently-used prom attire for the Baldwin Whitehall School District's prom night. So there's a pop-up shop in our, in the community room on May eighth, and anyone who feels that they have some beautiful gently-used prom that these young women can use, they can come and shop for free, and, and that includes shoes. And, uh, the other thing we're also doing on the fourteenth is hosting Dress for Success Pittsburgh. Dress for Success has a mobile unit, and Dress for Success is a situation where young women and people who are, women who are looking for jobs and don't have professional attire, they can connect with Dress for Success, and they can select an outfit for interviews or their first day of work. And, uh, we'll be hosting the mobile, the mobile van there, and limited access. You'd have to check with Paula for anybody that wants to make a donation, um, on that particular day, and that is May fourteenth. And then finally, um, uh, fundraising season, we're running, we are in, in the midst of our, our library fundraiser. We just kicked it off. Um, I did check with Paula just as I came out. I gave her a text. She said, it's too soon to say how we're doing. I would encourage people to give it a try to give online because that way it's, it's very easy. But, you know, you probably received your letter in the mail. If you didn't, we'll be happy to, to send you another one. And just, uh, anyone that, the, the fundraising, the whole thing will be over around the thirtieth, but if you get fifty or more, you get a gift card, you eligible to receive a gift card from a local business. So, um, I think that pretty much wraps up our report unless anyone has any questions.
I will, all right, so.
Yes.
For your event, uh, for the high school student?
Mm-hmm.
Are you gonna have a flyer that you're gonna give out that we can put on, maybe social media or anything like that?
Well, if the, the event, the, the invitation, if there are some professional women, I can, I can connect you if you think that there might be some woman that would be in, wanna be one of the professionals on the panel. Um, however, the, the invited guests are right now from Baldwin High School. And so the fact the teachers there are making sure it is, it's open only to the, to the girls there. Um, but certainly, I know the teachers are doing a good job, but if you think, I'd be happy to, you know, make sure. If you give me some contact information for you, uh, more information on it specifically.
Okay, you answered my second question as well. I was gonna ask you, uh, what about that for boys?
Uh, well, um, we should have one for the boys. Good idea. We'll have to find some, some, some professional men, right?
Great. Thank you so much, Marilyn. Uh, giving online is easy, folks?
Yes, it is.
It's very easy. It takes about five seconds. They even have a QR code in your mailer, so check your mail. The little mouse is on the envelope browser. The mouse of the library is on the envelope, so check out your mail for that. Also, check out your mail for the mailers coming from fire department, right? We can give.
That'll be amazing.
We can give, we can give. We'll, we'll support.
And if you do have a problem, seriously, if you do have any kind of an issue with tech issues, we do have a, a, one of our staff members that will help with that. So if you're not know how to use a QR code or you're thinking that little green light's tough to use, um, you know, give us a call and we'll help you figure it out, too. But, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have recreation. Mr. Soborowski.
Um, yeah, that's not here, is there?
No, you're on your own.
I'm on my own? Oh, boy. I have nothing to report.
I would like to report, uh, this had Eugene made her arrival, uh, on Sunday morning. Kathy Jean. Kathy Jean.
Carolyn Jean.
Um, she arrived at seven fifty-three A M. She's seven pounds, eleven ounces, and twenty-five inches long. And mom and baby are doing well.
Yay, great.
Congratulations to Hannah and family.
I guess I could add to your, with that, um, in terms of recreation. Uh, the recreation board is gonna handle birthday activities at the borough complex in Snyder Field. The point person is Teresa Lee Chen. Uh, so if you have someone that wants, for whatever, ever reason, they have young kids, I think there's a path to Cub Scout troop that's coming, and, you know, and they don't wanna be, you know, on roadways. The borough complex in Snyder Field is a great place to be and look for, uh, Teresa, uh, at the, you know, it's, it's the same time, the nine o'clock, uh, in between eight-thirty and nine. I, I, I told people to come at, uh, you know, ten to eight, ten to nine, but no later than nine, because I went to bus to be able to leave at nine. So, uh, I can add to your, your report.
Okay, thank you. Next we have public works, Mrs. Iker.
Okay, um, I have got to report, uh, despite not having any verbal communication with anybody who works for Public Works since February. All right, um, so, um, I, I am aware that, um, uh, yard waste season is, um, pick, picking up and it is something that the, the Public Works has been able to, to go around and cut the grass. Why do I know it? I, I saw it with my own two eyes that, that they are indeed, um, doing the grass cleaning. And I'm, I'm sure that there are, there are residents who are also doing, um, uh, pruning and, and grass cutting on, on their, um, respective yards. So I, I wanted to ask, um, Ms. Words, uh, for the, um, yard waste dump that is situated near, um, Prospect Park, um, is that indeed open to, to Whitehall residents at this time?
Yes, it's been there since, I don't know if it was April one, but that first week it was literally April first.
Okay, all right, so, um, well, when you can go out there and, and dispose of their, um, yard waste and you don't have to wait for a bulk trash night, in, in fact, you can take your, your yard waste out there. Fantastic. Good to know. Um, uh, also on the, um, the, the subject of Prospect Park regarding the, um, the, the cleanup, I, I just wanted to, to confirm that we'll, we'll have, um, the, the restaurants open for that, and I hope for also the, um, the counterpart on, on Snyder Field.
I don't know if they have a member of them, but staff will be working that day. They'll have keys if they're needed.
Yeah, someone asked me about that, and, uh, I asked the chief, I said, 'cause I know the chief is gonna do it. I said, "Do you have a key?" He said, "I don't," but the public works, uh, will, will have keys to open it.
Uh, so, um, that, that was part of what I was getting at. Um, so, uh, have, who, who has asked Public Works to, to be in- involved with, with this? And will this, um, generate over time?
They've been involved, uh, for four years, at least, that I can say.
Okay.
Somebody has to pick up the garbage. You know, we, we pick up the litter, we put it in bags, we set it on the side, or, or throw it in the truck. That, that's, um, so that's, that's the reason why we're involved. And then they, they take it to work.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, that, that, that sounds very good. I, I'm just respectfully requesting that we, we open the, the restaurants in Snyder Field and at, at Prospect Park for, for that activity. Um, I think that it's a great thing. I was planning actually, uh, on being out at, at Prospect Park, but now that I know that we are, are also tending to Snyder Field, I, I might be more inclined to, to stay closer to home, especially since I, I know that, that, that field is once again soggy. And I don't think that that's necessarily within your, your scope of work when, when you're talking about, um, litter removal, but, um, it is definitely, um, an, an important thing to note considering that, uh, a year ago, what, um, this body had voted on is, um, spending thirteen K for, um, an outside contractor to, to go ahead and, and ready that field for, uh, for baseball. Right now, it, it's definitely, um, much too wet for, for anyone. And I, quite honestly, um, would necessarily recommend that the, the children would get involved with, with trying to, to do anything where, with that massive mud puddle, and in fact, it, it might, um, be, um, uh, somewhat of a, a distracted thing, um, so. Um, I, yes.
I thought the, I mean, I, I understand that there's a puddle there, but I thought, based on the conditions that we've had the last two weeks, it was a little bit.
It was like that before. It's been muddy.
Uh, and they are still thinking it's going on. Uh, it's quite customary when you have those slow points that you add, um, the, uh, field lay surface to it. And I know that, so that's somewhat of a maintenance problem. But given the fact that, um, it's the third one this month that I heard, I think a week ago, in the area, um, I think it's, it's done real well. Just my opinion.
It's the one that's April of, on record?
I think it's, 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 uh, now.
It is the one that's, on, on April, uh, April on record, yes.
You already met her a quarter for April.
Okay, I'm a little behind on my local ways.
Well, um, I, I'm unclear what exactly was the, the scope of work regarding, um, the thirteen K that, that was spent on this, but I, I thought that there, there was some, um, work regarding, um, perhaps cleaning out some, uh, underwater drainage. I mean, underground drainage regarding that.
I'm sorry to interrupt you. I can answer your question as far as the scope of work. Um, infield mixed material was, um, brought in and delivered. Um, the field was, uh, graded. Believe it or not, there's an excess of, of elevation change from third base to first base in that year. With naked eye, we'd never be able to tell that, but it exceeds that. So, um, the, the contractor, I don't recall their names, um, however, they did do, um, uh, fine grading, uh, additional material was added. Some places that load point was, um, three to four inches low, that's underneath the puddle score. Um, so that's what was done. Uh, there was, um, if I recall, there was a, uh, section of underdrain that was added to, uh, give it a, a, a place to drain. There are numerous drains in that field in that corner of the field, um, so that was what the scope of work was.
Yes, yes, I, I'm, I'm definitely, um, uh, in agreement that it, it's far better than it was this time last year. However, um, it, it is in still non-playable condition. And, um, I, I just wanted that to, to be noted, and it also to, to be noted, um, re- regarding, um, how potentially it, it could, um, turn into a real, honest to goodness, mud war out there, um, if we're not careful. So, let, let's hope for the best of weather, honestly, um, between now and then, because I, I am looking forward to, um, being involved with, with the cleanup on four-twenty. And to, and I, I know that, um, the, the civil folks from the, the Democratic Committee of Whitehall are, are very much looking forward to, to participate and, and, and answer your open call. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for, for dealing with that and, um, for, for organizing that with, with Public Works. Fantastic. And, um, so, um, we, we have, um, another entity to, to thank regarding our, our great, um, storm sewage works, and that is Public Works, because the lower covert of, of Doverdale that is, um, responsible for making sure that Cassie Village does not flood, is, is under, um, regular maintenance of, um, our Public Works Department. And I personally observed them without saying anything and keeping a respectable distance to allow them to do their work, that it was, um, quite, quite, um, an ordeal to haul out things like, honest to goodness, large logs and large rocks that are not natural to the stream. And from my expectation of the upper covert that is closer to the Union Park border, what we have is, um, a, a considerable amount of erosion from, uh, the work that I presumed was done in, in twenty-seventeen to, to help with, with all of the, the rainwater that, um, was, eh, in fact, in the past, very problematic to the residents.
Just to give you some context, that's going to be resolved by the Baldwin Manor Association, which we approved to use some, some of their land. They wanted to use some of Whitehall Borough property to stage for a big project right in that area to fix the problem.
Right, so it's the, that's the, uh, park association.
Yes, I believe that's June third. Yeah, that's a separate, yeah, that's not the borough.
Uh, I, I am sure, I am sure that this was a Whitehall Borough Public Works truck with Whitehall Borough.
Down the bottom, yeah.
Yes, down.
Yeah, you're talking about the upper culvert. That's what I'm referring to. The upper culvert is having a project down, on June third, I think it's due officially.
Yes, yes, I, because I do remember being happy to, uh, approve the, the rocks that were being staged. Yes, yes, fantastic. Um, if there's anything that I can do to help, um, let, let me know, because that, that's a fantastic thing to, to restore, um, the, that, that stream.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, next we have, uh, public safety. Mr. V.
Thank you, Madam President. Uh, two items here. Uh, first of all, the Ford, this is good news, right, Chief? Really good news. Advises that our two twenty-twenty-five police interceptor utilities will hit the assembly line May thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four. So we'll, we'll be driving around these in October. October twenty-four.
We might get a good trade because the one that's being traded in is being repaired right now.
So that's good news. Uh, second, uh, the chief recommends council consider hiring Paul Goldberg as part-time police communication operator. Can you give us a little background?
He's currently employed full-time by Allegheny County nine-one-one in their CAD department, which is computer-aid dispatch. That's the technology aspect of Allegheny County nine-one-one. He's, uh, started out as a dispatcher. He misses being on, answering the phones and being on the radio, and he's looking to supplement his income for his fourteen-year son to play some travel sports. He is more than qualified to help us out on a part-time basis.
I, I think he sounds very qualified. All right, I'm gonna make that motion then, that we, uh, hire Paul Goldberg as part-time police communication operator.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second. All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.
That's all I've got.
Okay, any questions for Mr. V? Okay, we will move on to administrative services. Mrs. Pugh.
Hey, this evening on my desk, there was a, a very nice note from a resident. Uh, they received their blue recycling cans on a Saturday. There was some confusion. She sent an email, and promptly on Monday morning, she received an answer from Courtney, as well as, uh, the last time she sent her an email about a dead deer. That was removed promptly. So that is the end of my administrative.
It wasn't put in the recycling cans.
So let's, uh, into, uh, parts, Mrs. Pugh?
Can I ask Kathy a quick question? Will the lights be on when Harris courts Friday? I'm out there tomorrow.
We'll make a note of that.
Thank you. Sixteen people be there.
Kathy, your parts report?
Okay, I have, uh, a couple things on the parts report. Okay, I have a couple things on the parts report. There's a request from Donna Westbrook's of Tulletson School about doing something with playground equipment in the park next to their school. I would like to have a parks committee meeting on Monday at five o'clock. It's been advertised to meet with her and find out exactly what she's thinking. That's all she said in the email is that she could make a meeting and they're interested in providing some kind of equipment, but I don't know, we don't know anything more about it. So we're gonna just have a quick meeting with her, not a quick meeting, but a meeting with her to just see what she's thinking and share our needs.
I don't know if I would be able to make it at five, that's a little too early for me.
Where is it, is that till?
No, it's gonna be here.
Oh, here?
Yeah, it's regularly happening.
It's Monday, it's Monday twenty-second.
Yes, yes. Because that's the regularly scheduled meeting, so come as soon as you can.
You want to push them back though since I have a little work, but that's fine. I'll try to make it as soon as possible.
All right, there's some else?
Okay, we would like to move forward with the request from the Soccer Association. They are going to donate the money to build a wall. The Soccer Association will deliver the materials, Borough will install the kickwall at a mutually agreeable location. The Soccer Association maintains its taking reasonable efforts to keep it free from graffiti. The Borough wants it removed, if the Borough wants it removed, the Soccer Association will remove it. If they do not remove it in a reasonable time, then the Borough has the right to remove it. These are the revised agreements we've been talking about with them. If it's okay with you, if they sign it, can we? Is there any objection?
No objection.
Okay.
We want a motion.
You want a motion?
Yes, yeah.
That we accept this agreement.
So who? Motion's been made second, all in favor say aye, not aye, opposed? Motion unanimous.
I am looking into trash cans for the parks, but they're extremely expensive and every one I've talked to so far has made a face.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that.
Okay, so no one can.
Trash cans and recycling cans.
Yes, I have more information on it that I'll share in a minute.
Okay, all right.
Thank you, Kathy. Can we move on to new business?
Can we talk about ALON? It wasn't on our list today.
Well, no, this is on our new business, that's why I'm gonna start with Tristan.
Oh, sorry, sorry. I'm really excited, go ahead Tristan.
That's okay, you're next.
Okay.
To report on the annual meeting, Allegheny Leading Municipalities, it's held in Seven Springs usually, and four of our council members were able to attend, so they can report on what they learned.
So I'll just do a couple of items because they knew everything was new to me. But I thought one of the more interesting things that I'd like to bring to council and hopefully for Ms. Works to consider for the future, there was a talk hosted by the Department of Homeland Security, CISA, I think they, I think they pronounce it, they do the letters, I don't know, but CIA.
CISA, right.
It is CISA?
Yes.
Or SISA? Either way, but it stands for Cyber Security and Infrastructure Security Agency. Real briefly, they focus on cybersecurity, obviously, and enhancing protections for websites. They very much encourage that all eligible entities go under the dot gov domain. That provides a better oversight and security level than the dot org that we currently have as our website. So I thought that was a good talk and just the security and the other support that being on a dot gov hosted, if that's the right term, site gives. But I think that's something, I don't know, Ms. Works, if that's a difficult transition for what we have.
I don't believe it will. I have not wanted to wait until council, everyone heard this, I said it in a session as well, really informative. I don't think having built three websites now and knowing a little bit on the backend and, you know, a little bit of the IT side with our new IT firm that this year, they're challenging for us to do, but I'd like council to give us direction to pursue it or investigate. They don't know at this point if there's any cost, they don't believe.
I think the dot gov, I thought they said was free.
Correct. So I have not confirmed that on my own, but there is, you know, that type of council is something Alyssa and I can certainly start the process of investigating.
Yeah, like that.
I agree.
They more secure would be the way to go, I would change if they do that.
On that topic, that, on the Microsoft Cloud side of it, that services our emails, that they do have something called FedRAMP compliant. I don't know if our accounts are more of the small business or if they've already been associated with the government side of the business, but the government side of my, the business would of course be my preference.
That's something we can discuss with our IT if that's council preference, if we're moving forward with this.
Yes, that would be good. Thank you.
Sorry to sneak up, there's also a state ramp. Go ahead, check with the state PA on their standards, it might be a little different than FedRAMP.
The other interesting thing that was more in my area was an EMS presentation done by the Citizens Concerned for EMS. It was hosted by Eric Schmidt, who's from Shaler, and it consists of EMS professionals, obviously in the Allegheny area. They gave an overview of just how much EMS costs are rising and how little funding is coming in from the state, not all that different from our fire departments. It's a problem everywhere. But they also have the problem of, again, with fire department, finding personnel, but they have the added problem of, once you find personnel, to retain them, because they, it's very common for paramedics and entities to move on to more lucrative careers such as nursing or something in the hospital setting. So I thought that was an interesting topic to hear, and I think it's something that to keep in forefront of everybody's mind that, just like how the mayor gives police reports, how Skip gives fire department reports, going forward, I'd like to start giving MERTA reports about how MERTA's responding, hopefully to Whitehall. I know I can get the information for the whole MERTA area, but I will start, I'm gonna start providing information about how MERTA is servicing Whitehall and how important it is and how much it needs to be in our forefront of our minds of, these are the biggest expenses that we have as the Borough and we should be paying attention and seeing how they are helping us.
That was great.
Okay, Kathy.
Well, in the belief that we should attend all meetings.
All meetings.
I drew the short straw and I got to go to the Borough watching meeting. The speaker was excellent, he really was, he held my attention the whole time. And after, what, six nights sleep now, I thought about Steeplechase Park could become a Borough sanctuary. I'll put it on the park plan for fifteen years from now, because it won't take us that long, but it did pique my interest. The bad news that I heard, both our county executive and the county council people there are strongly pushing, what's the perfect term I wanna use? Reassessments, property reassessments. If you listen to them, it's coming. That's all I have to say.
What they're trying to do, they wanna try to keep it out of the hands of the court, that's the key thing, and they're trying to come up with the best system for it. So it's coming, it's definitely coming. So the assessment is, we've done about thirteen years since our last reassessment, I think it's been a while, so.
We should welcome it, I mean, all reassessments do it. Because we've, we collect the same tax revenues every year, so it just matters, it's a function of the assessment times the rate. What a reassessment does is it makes sure that if you own the same value house in one part of the Borough and someone else has another, you know, the same value in another part of the Borough, that you're paying the same taxes. All it does is make it fairer, but, you know, it doesn't mean that the taxes are gonna go up. I mean, they'll go up for somebody that's under assessed, you know, compared to, this happened with Maryfield, a lot of people that lived around, you know, when Maryfield came in, the focus was all on them and there were homes in Baldwin Manor that were probably the same value that were, you know, under assessed compared to, sorry. That were under assessed compared to Maryfield. So what reassessments do is they make the tax burden fairer among the residents, and we should, we should want, I believe we should want fairer.
You want it to happen, it can happen. We had a longtime school board member, I won't mention her name, but she said, what's wrong with the Borough and what's wrong with the school district, we're under assessed. She says, take an example, my street, we're still under assessed there. So guess what happened? Kinda came out and reassessed that street, you know, so we get along real well with our neighbors, but she was trying to set up a point, you know, she's right, but it took our street and didn't go anywhere else. But, you probably don't want to say that.
Okay, nice to hear you on. I'm very excited, sorry. Hi, so enjoyed going to my first ALON convention, I thought it was fantastic to be able to attend as many sessions as possible. They double stack, so you can't attend everything on some days. Really enjoyed getting to speak to members from councils from other local communities in Allegheny County. Really enjoyed specifically the veterans' speeches and the veterans' support discussion that was held early on a Saturday morning. And a couple of things that I wanna highlight is that we always wanna be supporting our veterans, but we need to make a bigger effort to support our veterans in what they need, not just on Memorial Day, not just on Veterans Day, but every day when they need to get a ride, have somebody to talk to, get help with technology, with going to a doctor's appointment, or being helped with a virtual doctor's appointment. So one of the big discussions that was put on, and we got to meet with gentlemen from the Allegheny Veterans Services at the county, and they offered us a lot of really great information, but one of the best pieces they offered was that it would be so good if we could connect our libraries and our librarians with some of the services that are already available to veterans. So got really inspired.